Okay. Um, so we think Doug is not.
He texted me that he thought he might be.
Oh, there's a B.
Hmm, maybe. Oh, yeah, there he is.
Okay. Just in time.
He's not one.
Seven oh one.
Oh, you're right on time, Doug. Good to see ya.
Seven oh one.
And we had Letty.
Thank you.
Oh, no problem.
Did she say she'd be right back?
Letty?
Yeah.
I just saw.
Okay, well, we'll get started. Doug, you had something to...
Yeah.
That's what they say.
So, um, yeah, uh, thank you. Um, obviously, you know, we all know how hard Glenn works for us and we all appreciate him and his expertise so much. And, um, he, you know, asked, I think, for a very reasonable adjustment, um, to, um, you know, to accommodate the holidays and allow him to enjoy the holidays, uh, which he absolutely deserves. Um, and to show our gratitude, um, I would like to make a motion to approve that request.
Second?
Thank you. I made it, I made it might sound much more complicated than it was. Because the eight hours for January first, I, it doesn't, it just doesn't hurt our contract that we haven't signed yet. But it, it's after January, I mean, it's after December thirty first.
And we, and we trust you and I'm sure we've had some long meetings.
Well, I will have, I will have made up that time anyway.
And you've been working on these.
Yeah, and all I had to, I, the eight hours for Christmas was gonna be difficult, but it isn't really. Cause I'm gonna work four hours on Christmas Eve and four hours on New Year's Eve. And that's all in this month, so that eight hours that I missed on Christmas is already taken care of. I had freaked myself out for some reason. So, thank you very much.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Sorry.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright.
Thank you.
Well, should you respond?
Thank you.
Responsible, Glenn. So, it's a responsibility to actually write it out.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood, I, I, I just hate that Christmas is on, on Wednesday.
And New Year's.
Should always not be on Wednesday.
We have no control over that.
No control.
And, um...
Talk to Santa about it.
Do we have a, do we have a, we don't have a draft contract from you for twenty twenty five?
No, which I, which I should have provided to you.
Yeah, so you might look at the calendar too and even...
Well, there is something that I'm going, there, there will be something attached to that, so I, I will give that to you at first meeting.
Schedule wise?
December, yeah. I mean, in, in January.
Okay. Alright, um, so we have a public hearing this evening regarding a capital construction project on Prescott Road for new primary electric lines, um, and this is a scenic road.
Hey, what are you taking?
And we have, um, I believe somebody here from EverSource.
Okay, yeah.
Here, you guys all set? Um... So, um, any questions before I turn it over to her to give us, uh, an overview?
Did you say we have to accept the application? Tell you your notes?
Um, it is a public hearing. So, you should.
It sounded like that's what you were advocating for, so I make that motion, we accept the application, which is detailed in our packet.
Um, I, I just have a question. Is this something where we need to invoke jurisdiction?
Yeah, that's why, I think that's what you need, yeah.
Okay, okay, okay.
Is that what you, yeah.
Okay, perfect, okay. I, I second.
Any discussion? Um, Glenn's comments are in your packet right after the map. Um, and his comments include that the applicant, he finds the application complete. Sorry. Were you looking for a second?
No, I got the second.
You got the second?
I was looking for the vote.
Okay. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor of invoking jurisdiction?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any other questions before we hear from the applicant? Alright, Crystal, are you there?
Hi there, yes, I'm here. Can you guys hear me alright?
Yep, yes.
So, um, I am contracted with EverSource and I'll be managing this project. Um, the project is to install four utility poles for new primary line for a new house. Um, so, do you guys have all the materials that I had submitted?
Yes.
We have a, a map. Do you have a visual you could put up?
We have, we have, we can...
I, I apologize, I, I do not.
Nope, we, we can do it. This. You can probably start talking if you want to.
Oh, okay, I wasn't sure if I was waiting for you guys to do that. Um, so, the only, the only difference here for what I submitted is that there's a possibility that it's gonna be Lucas Tree Service instead of Northern Tree Service that will complete this work. Um, they're a great company as well, so it doesn't really change anything, but I wanted to make sure I let you guys know that. Um, so the specifications that EverSource requires for this is to remove the vegetation eight feet to the side of the new primary lines, fifteen feet below the wires, and ten feet, I'm sorry, fifteen feet above the, the wires and ten feet below the primary lines. Um, all of the wood is gonna be chipped and removed. Um, if anybody wants to keep the wood, we'll, we'll leave that on site. I have a list of, the trees are all marked with blue and white checkered tape that's out there. Um, and then I, I have a, a list that shows what those trees are. And, and that's basically the scope of the work, so I, I welcome any questions that anybody has.
I had a chance to go down and drive by there yesterday or parked and walked back and forth by it and, uh, to see the application, it brought tears to my eyes. Not because of cutting of the trees, but because so many thousands of dollars of engineering work went into cutting up just a bunch of brush, basically. There was nothing, no trees of any value that were marked as, as to be cut. It was just light brush, but I guess the law is the law. The town adopted the scenic road ordinance or law and, uh, applicants required to do it. But it just seems like in some of these cases, the money could be a heck of a lot more well-spent, uh, than marking a bush, bunch of, uh, you know, brush and dead trees. So, uh, I would make a motion that we approve their request to, uh, go forward with the work.
You did, you did public comment.
Yeah.
Well, let's, that was called a discussion.
Yeah.
Uh, I have a question for Glenn, uh, if I may, cause I, I read your comments, I just wanted to see, do you have any concern about, um, the switch of companies that will be handling?
Not at all.
No? Great.
My only question had been, and I can't tell on here, but at some point on the opposite side of the street, it seemed like it was open field and I wondered if you had looked at all at crossing over. I know sometimes lines do that. As you drive down a road, they kinda go back and forth.
Yes, that's true. In this case, um, it's not crossing over to the other side of the road.
But had you looked at that at all? Cause I think it's open, isn't it open field across the street?
I, I'm sorry, misunderstood. You mean of moving the poles to the other side instead? So, this is out of my scope of the, you know, the engineering process. Um, what I can tell you is that when the engineers are doing this, they, they are looking at all possible scenarios and so they do try to put it in the best possible placement, um, if that makes sense. Um, and so I, for whatever reason, that is what, this is what they came up with as far as placing these utility poles where they're at.
It's probably cause they'd have to cross back over, cause the houses are on the...
Yeah, I know, they have to go here and then they have to go back.
With probably more poles.
Ned, did you have?
What's that?
Oh, I thought you...
No, I know.
Okay.
Is that a problem?
I just wondered if that would save cutting some trees, but it sounds like it would.
But did you, did you actually go over and look at the trees?
Not up close, I drove through. I know it says a lot of them are diseased, but...
Yeah, it's just, it's just, basically it's a brush. I think there were two, it was like a maple and an oak that were probably ten inches or so in diameter, but the rest of it is just brush. And, you know, we all pay for this, uh, through our electric rates, all this, uh, engineering work. Obviously, they have to do the engineering work to site the poles. It's just, to me, a crime that we had to go through a formal hearing process to, again, I'll use the words, cut some, cut some brush.
I don't know how much...
Probably have, I'm sorry.
If they have to do the work anyways. And the engineering work. Any other questions from the board? What's that? Um, public comment? Are you guys here for this? Okay. Um, anything else? It's an interesting question. When we did the subdivision, we didn't know this was, that there wasn't any power. It'd be...
Yeah, I know, how does that happen?
Good to know.
Is that something?
Probably not true. It just...
No, it's a unique situation. I mean, I've lived in Brentwood my whole entire life and I live on Prescott and I never looked up.
Never noticed that there was a gap.
Never noticed that was not a connection. They chose how to connect it. If you look at the particular situation where it comes off a north road and where the power stops at Ted's Fields House, that's the last one on that stretch, and then it comes, actually comes off a Scrabble road, believe it or not, and comes down in and connects from the other end. And there just wasn't a need for power there.
There's just a gap.
And the only houses that are ever gonna be built are gonna be on that side of the road.
Right.
So even if you put the power lines on the other side, they're still gonna have to go that way.
Yes, have to cross.
And then you're gonna have to cut the ones on the right hands, you're gonna have to cut trees to get the power lines in, no matter how you work it, so, kinda is what it is.
We, we approved a subdivision about four years ago. It was Russo, uh, subdivision that went in there. And at that time, there were probably twenty very large trees that were cut for line of sight purposes. Not for electrical access, but for line of sight. So, that was a real project that I could see value in putting the time and effort into and evaluating the trees that were there to be cut. Um, the town engineer actually commented on that. But this is a very, very minor situation here. I think, again, two, two trees that would have minimal commercial value.
So we have a motion?
Yep.
To approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any, Crystal, did you wanna add anything else or are you all set?
No, I think I'm all set. I just have one question. If you guys approve this, um, am I cleared to begin work right away? Or do you guys send a letter out?
Yeah, there's no appeal process like a ZBA decision.
Any final discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a DMV application for six oh three auto and truck at one eighty B Route one twenty five. That's what you're here for?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're gonna keep asking you until we get to the...
Yeah, until we get to...
If you could just, for me, sir, just print your name on that sheet of paper that's right there?
Yeah.
And then if you can just quick introduce yourself and tell us what you're proposing? And if we've already seen that. I feel like we've, may have already seen this.
Yeah, so there is a current dealer there.
Okay.
But, um, this is a new dealer application.
Okay.
Uh, new business. And I, I'm Richard and I'm opening up a dealership.
Okay. So same place, the, you're not proposing any changes to the...
No. No, the plot's the same.
Played out, yeah, alright, okay.
It's not in addition to the business that's there.
No, so the, the guy that's there now is leaving and I'm moving in, hopefully January first.
Okay. Um... Anything else?
You'll notice on the second page of that application that I've listed out the parking spaces very clearly.
Yes.
It'll be under the list of restrictions and also in the comments.
Oh, good point, excellent point.
Okay, this, I've done this for a few reasons. Number one, it helps the applicant to know exactly how many cars he can have on site and what's, parking spaces are designated for what area. And it also helps KIP with code enforcement.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay?
So we did approve a site plan for this a couple of years ago. We actually did a site walk, so we've been out there and, you know, so there were specific reasons why we asked for landscaping and things like that. So we would expect that all to remain the same.
Yeah.
Um...
It's probably the need to use car a lot on one twenty five.
Yeah, no, I plan on keeping it that way.
Don't change it.
We appreciate that.
Put up some nice flowers, keep it nice.
If it's appropriate, I'll make a motion.
It needs this criteria now. Correct.
It's approved.
Yes, they have an approved site plan.
Yep.
And that, uh, parking calculation that I've put on the application comes directly from the recorded mileage.
Okay.
So we're just, we would be voting for me to sign the application?
You, basically, you're voting on this for the state of New Hampshire for a new dealer's license. That, that's why, why it's here.
Um, actually, before you, uh, make a motion, I just, one question, it probably doesn't matter, but on the, um, uh, the type of permit or license under consideration, does it matter that for Mastriano Group Salem is misspelled? Their address? Salam? I didn't think it really mattered, but I just thought I'd ask before we...
It does. M A S T R I A N O?
You're not familiar with Salem?
Yeah.
Oh, Salem?
Yeah.
I'll correct it.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, I, I, I move that, uh, we approve the, um, application with, uh, gratitude and congratulations.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion?
Who's the second on that?
Uh, Ned.
Ned, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Welcome to Brentwood.
If you wanna celebrate, there's some great restaurants in Salem.
Salam.
Making me hungry, I'm thinking about...
What's your favorite?
Yeah. I think they have a tasting kitchen in Sal- in Salem.
Alright, um, review TEC contracts. So we've talked about this, um, for a bit. We wanted to ask TEC to up, update, um, our roadway regulations, which are twenty-five or so years old. We have a proposal from them in your packet, um, for seventy-seven hundred dollars. You guys had a chance to look at it?
Take care, guys.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm kinda interested in this and I'd just like to go into a little bit of the history of, of where our regulations came from, you know, going back to thirty years or so. You know, on our first developments in Brentwood was what, old, us old timers called Brentwood Forest, which is over near where, where Doug lives. And that was in the mid, mid-sixties, going to the early seventies, the first phase. Brentwood had no road specifications at all. Due to the fact that was kinda sandy soil over there, they essentially pushed the pine heels off and put some hot top down, which, you know, lasted for probably five or six years and roads started to fall apart. Town had to go in, having it, now been an approved subdivision, houses were built. So town went there at considerable expense and, and, and upgraded the road. And at the time, we were lucky to have a new, uh, young engineer from Stone and Webster in Boston that, uh, that, uh, did roadwork. And we also had a luck, uh, lucky to have Bob Samber and it was a super for sewer construction and did a lot of the construction, road construction in the Seacoast during that same time period. So coming from Brentwood, the two of them, you know, got together, collaborated, and we had a, you know, somebody with the textbook information, knowledge. And we had somebody with the real world knowledge of what soils can do to roads and what subgrades required. And, and that's where the two of those guys put this together and it's really worked well for many, many years. In fact, I think we all agree that most of our new subdivision, subdivision roads last for twenty-five years without any maintenance. That after that, with the freeze thaw cycles and the, you know, the issues you have with payment deterioration, you know, we come around and we re, rework the, or repave the roads. Largely what we do today is re, you know, grind up the old asphalt, regrade the subgrade, put down a new, uh, asphalt service. And for the last forty-five years, John Bell from Bell and Flynn in Stratum has done all the work. When we ride around and see towns, roads being repaved, that has really nothing to do with the Brentwood Highway Department other than they're directing traffic. Bell and Flynn does the work and John, uh, Bell, uh, a little younger than I am, but he's in high school when I was there, uh, actually goes out and walks every roadway that has any reconstruction done on it. Usually seem out around town here on Sundays prior to the spring season. So he's got a, just a wealth of knowledge and understanding of what, you know, what works, you know, for maintaining town roads where you don't have to put a lot of money into them when you do repave them. So I think TEC is a great, um, uh, organization, nothing against them at all. Uh, and I believe, you know, they have the textbook in, knowledge of what we need, but I, I really think it's very important. I see right in item number one here, it says, "TEC will coordinate with the town planner to consolidate areas of interest for modifications or additions to the existing regulation." And that's fine, I mean, nothing, take anything away from Glenn at all, but I, I think that before we start investing hours of work by TEC, that we arrange, and I'd be happy to do it, uh, to talk to John Bell and, uh, have him have a conversation with TEC about what he sees as issues as he's, you know, repaved roads over the last forty years. And I think we get a good outcome, but I'd hate to see just sending this off to a, you know, textbook engineering company without the onsite knowledge of what we're dealing with. I'd rather see that collaboration with the two of them first and then TEC can, could write up, uh, some changes if, if they determine their earning. So it's a good thing, it's a healthy thing, twenty-five or thirty years, it's about time we do a revision or a look.
I think that's a great idea.
So, that, yeah. It's okay.
You know, I don't wanna exclude Glenn from it all, Glenn's gonna be...
No, that's what I'm saying. If, if the planning board is the client, we can just, everywhere it says town planner, you can say client or whoever they designate that we want to talk to them.
Right, and I'd be willing to, uh, I know John Bell and willing to go and just kinda broach the subject with him. I mean, I haven't talked to him, but I'm sure he's so, uh, easy to work with and he puts so much of his own time and effort into Brentwood's roadway system.
It's a great idea. I mean, it, it just, um, we want to get this contract signed by the end of December.
That's my only issue, yeah.
If, if we do what Letty just said, and, um, that could be turned around very quickly. Um, I don't think there would be any problem if the board said with that, with that change or...
Oh, oh, absolutely, 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 yeah, I'd say...
Get it done.
I'll make a motion, we sign the contract now with the modification that Letty suggested. And I will, over the next few weeks, uh, talk to John Bell, but I'd, I'd rather not, rather TEC not start billing, putting billable hours until they've had that conversation.
I, I, and I'm sure they would have no problem with that at all.
Thank you.
I'll sec, I'll second that motion.
Um, the only question I had, and I don't know what our contracts with TEC normally, um, how it's normally worded, but a not to exceed, because we don't have the budget. If they get into it and find... I doubt that would happen, but...
I think we'll know that right off quick as soon as John Bell has...
That, that could certainly be added.
Just, yeah.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
This is the budget we have, so...
Yeah.
He'll, that, that's not a problem at all.
Okay.
Mark, at your leisure over the next couple of weeks, maybe after Christmas, if you could make me a copy of all the town road regs, so I make sure the ones that are in my book are up to date, and I'll, I'll forward that to Bell and Flynn.
Aren't those, are those in your book?
Yeah, they should be.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you have the diagram, the subgrade, all the profiles.
Well, if they're in there, in this.
Just maybe a few copies, or a copy.
Oh, okay, I sure, yes, I would be...
Okay, so I think we need a motion, um, for, uh, authorizing me to sign the contract with the following...
We had a motion for him to talk with John Bell.
No, uh... I don't know if that's necessary.
No, that's...
We had a motion to change the wording.
Amend, post-contract...
Amend the contract itself.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the contract?
Or just sign the amended contract.
To authori...
Yeah.
A motion, here's what we need, someone to, a motion.
What did you say?
To authorize me to sign the contract with the following changes. One, where it says, um, town pla, under scope of services, where it says town planner changed to client and specify that the budget is a not to exceed amount.
Maybe just town planner, uh, comma, outside agent or something, just, I mean, we don't, we don't wanna preclude Glenn, Glenn from...
No, but we're not, if we say client, the town is the client.
Okay.
That, that covers whoever we want to have talk with TEC.
Cool. For one, town planner to client.
And two, the budget is not to exceed. And who will, oh, let's do that and then we can talk about how we get that done.
Who made that motion?
Would someone like to make that? I guess, can I make a motion?
Sure.
Yes, I'll make that motion. I never make a motion. I'll second it.
Your motion was, uh, make a motion to allow me to sign.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine, that's good.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Perfect.
Um, so who will talk to TEC about making those changes considering Wednesday is Christmas?
Yeah, I'll, I'll actually call him tomorrow.
Okay.
There are two things. I have to call for on behalf of Brentwood tomorrow, so I'll do that in the morning.
And then, Mark, I could use your help. I don't know how this works. Um, but we'll, so I'll sign the contract, but we need to encumber the funds. I don't know the process for encumbering.
I will take a signed contract and just go to the proper...
Yeah, that's all it takes, right?
Nope.
Oh, there's more?
You have to go on part of the select board.
Oh. Do I have to do that by the end of the year?
No, we're doing it all in January.
Okay.
Because...
I have a contract here to sign, but it does not need to be changed.
We need to change it.
We're gonna, we want to change it.
Why, why do you need to encumber?
Cause we're not...
Because we're using money that's in today and...
Oh, you're not gonna pay it this year?
No, we're not gonna pay it.
No, we don't know what we're paying.
In the services. It's an hourly billing.
Okay. Yeah, there isn't a select board meeting between the end of the year.
That, that reminds me, I know we just voted to approve it, but did they give us schedule for the work?
Oh!
Second page, three.
I think we should, uh, if we're gonna make changes, request that they provide...
Work is completed by...
How about August first?
It's a long time.
I'm just thinking, I mean, if, we, we don't wanna to, I wanna get the thing done right and well researched, well thought out, not, not rushed.
I mean, this is what they do, so it's not, we're not asking them to, um, you know, go into research mode. They know exactly what works for roads.
I think it would be a good option if they kind of focus on it and don't drag it out. We don't have to make them rush. Maybe let them suggest a schedule and if it's not, I think they should, you know, this task will be completed within twelve weeks or something like that.
I like that.
How about, how about I make a motion for June first, give them a little bit of wiggle room? January's pretty much out, I mean, Christmas...
Well, let's just ask them to, let's ask them to put a schedule according to these tasks.
Yeah, we don't necessarily dictate it, but ask them to provide a schedule.
You can let them know, we'd, we'd like it in Q one or Q two by, we don't wanna drag it out the whole year.
And do we necessarily need a motion for that or is that something that, that we can just ask them to do?
Does, just somewhere.
Somewhere. Yes.
And actually, I think, I think you're right. Asking them to do a schedule is something that could happen in the first scoping meeting after a contract is signed. You sit down with them and you say, "We would like you to schedule this out."
I mean, you, we have a good relationship with them and I don't see them being worried about it, but it is customary to have the schedule on the contract.
Is it really?
The contracts I, I don't know, similar.
It kind of makes sense.
This task will be completed within so many weeks or months of the rest of the period of contract execution.
For seventy-five hundred dollars, you ain't gonna get too many weeks of work.
Well, he's saying, he's saying it's sixty hours.
Yeah. Yeah, they don't need to give you six months.
It's only.
A few weeks.
There's some back and forth.
It's a month and a half of work.
All right. What, do you want to just make a motion to amend the approval to request that T E C include a schedule? You didn't hear any of that.
So may.
No. Did you hear that motion? I did not, sir. Bruce, would you repeat the motion?
Yeah, we just wanted to add some language to the signed contract, requesting a scope, no, not a scope word, but a schedule of, of the work, completion dates. What Glenn just said.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Want to email it to you?
All in favor?
No, it's on the microphone.
Steph said it did that. Aye.
Aye. Bruce mumbled.
All right.
Who's the second?
Steph.
Okay, review resilience contract for HOP grant funds. So, and I think we have a comment letter in here.
You didn't ask for comments.
You didn't.
But I, but I had a couple anyway.
Actually, so here's the thing.
And, and when I wrote these, I said to Mark, someone's not gonna like anything that I'm saying about grants for development rights.
So here's, here's, here's the catch. I did ask for comments on our proposal, and this is all from the proposal, which is now part of our contract with the state.
With HOP?
Mm-hmm. So we don't have to spend a lot of time on it. I mean, if they want to have a five-minute conversation with you and say, why would we do that? Well, you know, then we've, we've done that. But that's why it was included, because it was recommended by.
But do we have to do it, or is it just on the list of things that we could?
We have to at least.
Yeah, all we say is that we would talk about the feasibility of it.
Oh, great.
So we don't talk about it like we do the other ones.
We, we don't have to deliver anything, but we should just leave it.
And I gotta tell you, Mark Fugere, really good. I didn't know that he ever worked with Steve.
Yeah.
But that's a, that's a, that's like a tandem there.
That's what he said. When I talked to Steve, he said Mark was the workforce guy.
He's really good. He's been doing it a long time. He's really good.
Um, so that's the transfer of development rights. The accessory dwelling units. So you're saying if we say now that we want to pursue detached structures, that's, that's gonna take more time and effort for him to come up with.
The whole concept of allowing them detached means that you have, you really have to, the ordinance has to say something about what they're expected to look like.
Yeah.
So that, so that you don't, because if you go over to Kingston, there is an A D U on, I think it's in presidential estates, which is Madison Road.
Yes, yes.
It looks like a house in front of another house.
I have no idea what you could be.
What they could possibly, but there's no attempt with a breezeway or, or a pergola or anything trying to connect these. It's just a house sitting in the front yard.
It's on the opposite side of the driveway.
It, it's just, it's horrible. And, and that's, that, so I, and I know that Bruce doesn't like the, the concept of detached. But I want to smack him every time he says that, because the detached A D U's are a really good way of doing A D U's.
I think it's like a garage or something.
Or a barn, or a, or a carriage house.
My, my values haven't changed, but I have evolved in my thinking to think that this is a good idea.
And, and, and if, the earlier we can tell them to do that, because there is, there's definitely an increased level of work they'd have to do if they're gonna consider detached.
Okay.
And we should just send them running right away with that.
Okay. So a couple, couple things. One is, is Kingston the one, we saw an example where they have very specific, is that?
No, unfortunately, it's not.
Did that happen later, after? Okay. I wondered if maybe that was in response to something.
No, but when they do the reviews, because it's a conditional use permit through the planning board, they ask for architectural renderings. They don't want to have that ever happen again.
Yeah. So I think the writing is on the wall, that the legislature is going to force this on us anyways. So I think we want to do it the way that we'd like to see it and hope that it stands.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think we have a real opportunity here to bring the community together and, and come up with an, an A D, A D U ordinance that makes sense for Brentwood. The opportunity is really great.
So the mechanism will be a little bit different than our current reg, which just allows the building inspector to issue.
Well, there, they will, they will offer things. And one of the, one of the things that is common statewide is for it to be a conditional use permit from the planning board. Especially if there is any significant change to a footprint of a house. Most all of them do.
I think if you have any chance of any buy-in from residents, it's going to be through a process.
But is the legislature going to try to pass something that says it's by right and that the planning boards can't do anything like that?
They may.
Was that what it was?
Well, so, so I have to look to see if the actual text of the bill has been drafted yet. But when it does, I would caution folks because I think there's a very high likelihood that the bill will be amended throughout the, the process. So, so the, the honest answer is I, I don't know for sure, but I, the bill text, if it hasn't come out already, it should be coming out soon. But even that may not tell the full story of what's actually gonna happen.
Yeah. Well, it'd be nice if, you know, if we did this rather quickly, then maybe we could even have some input on that and say, look, we've, we, our community came up with a solution.
That we love and would like you not to undermine it.
Right.
But how, how would that, how would that be undermined? Wouldn't the town be still allowed to have something more stringent than?
Not the way it was written last time.
And they're, they are hot on A D U's, unfortunately. They seem to think it is the only way to solve the housing crisis, but it isn't.
Well, I have to say they're probably right, but with the political makeup of the two chambers now, it may be a little different than last year.
Well, what's interesting about the housing stuff is that it doesn't really break on Democrat versus Republican lines. It seems to break more House versus Senate lines, where the House, on a pretty bipartisan basis, you know, is enthusiastic about A D U's. And then the Senate, on a pretty bipartisan basis, is not, is less so. Because, I mean, Republicans control the House, but my friend Joe Sweeney, who actually represents Solomon, is, he, he's in House leadership. He is very pro, you know, diversifying housing stock, including A D U's. And there's a lot of Republican support, a lot of Democrat support in the House, in the Senate.
Through amended versions of the Senate, we, we can talk to our Senate.
Yeah, I, I think, I suspect, and, you know, again, I, I'm, this is me speculating, just based on what's happened in past bills. But I think that if it does get amended, there's a good chance that the Senate would be the one to do it. And then in that scenario, it would probably go to a committee of conference where the differences will be worked out.
It was really, it seemed like last time it was on different ends of the spectrum. So it was housing advocates, affordability advocates, and then it was like people who don't want any roles.
So, so what, what's gonna be interesting to see, because I think that even though the composition of the legislature is a little bit different, I think the dynamic will be similar in terms of who supports it and who doesn't. The wild card is what does Governor-elect A I envision? And I, she, during the campaign, she made it clear that she cares about this issue, obviously. But I think that it still remains to be seen in terms of what exactly she is open to. Is her position basically similar to Governor Sununu, or is she gonna go a different path? I'm not sure we know that totally yet.
Well, for the, for the next, looking ahead, the next five years is probably Brentwood's maybe one and only option to do something, move forward.
It seems like this is, to your point, this keeps coming back because it's relatively easy. Like, it's a very simple thing that they can just say, do this.
Yeah.
Doesn't necessarily mean it solves any problems, but they're just like, it's a lot less complicated than come in with some incentives and different things. But I think the, the old bill limited, like, it said towns can't limit the square footage, you can't do this, you can't do that. It was.
But from, from what I've heard anecdotally, even though I haven't seen language, anecdotally, they're trying to pare back the bill a little bit to make it more palatable. Because they really do want to get something positive done.
Yeah.
And so I think that I'm cautiously optimistic that this year, even though the composition of the legislature is different, that there is incentive for both sides to come together and get something done on this. Because, you know, like Glenn was saying, even though A D U's aren't like the end-all be-all, I do think especially for young people who are saving up to afford a home of their own, like, A D U's could really be a lifesaver in terms of an interim, like, kind of like a starter, you know, for families and things like that.
Or if somebody wants to stay in the town they're in and need to downsize.
Right. So, so I, I, I think the opportunity here is great, you know, you know, we'll, we'll monitor how things progress in the legislature. I think that we'll probably know a lot more, not even so much when the bill text comes out, but the first public hearing, I think will give us an idea of kind of where representatives are and things like that. And I think, so it, it's gonna be a long process. But I think that once the first public hearing happens, we'll start to get an idea of what attitude, where attitudes lie.
Okay. All right. And then, Glenn, you said that having a consultant research non-regulatory issues was initiatives was a waste of time.
It's just not a good use of the money, was my point.
So I think.
Because the R P C should be doing that anyway. They, they do that, and so they should be providing us with that information because they, they interact with housing advocates all the time.
Yeah.
And I just hate to pay, we, we, sixty thousand dollars seems like a lot of money.
Yeah, no, it goes fast.
But when we're talking about three or four ordinances, it's not a lot of money at all. It disappears really quickly.
I think the only question I remember is we talked a little bit about, could the town do something with land that we own? It was more questions like that, I think, that, like, is there some creative solution that we've kicked around or we've missed or? So again, I don't see it as something that they need to spend a lot of effort on.
I want to be, I think we need to be really stingy with this money.
Yeah.
Because this isn't all, this, this ain't no housing audits. What we're really trying to accomplish here is regulatory work.
Yeah.
And that costs money, and we've got someone giving us money, so we need to be stingy.
No, I mean, I pledged you for wanting to get some value out of the money. Now, who's in the driver's seat as far as the way that they're scheduling? I'm gonna go back to what Stephanie said.
Their, their entire, they're completely directed by us.
Oh, good. So.
They're, Steve and his group are completely directed by what we want to accomplish.
So they'll come down and talk to you instead of just starting to pull around.
They want to talk with the planning board right off, right off the bat.
I think we should ask them, we don't have a calendar, if they can come to the first or second. Actually, we need to talk about that, because our first meeting is January 2nd.
I think it is, yeah.
Does that even make sense, or should we cancel that?
There's already one in the office for you.
Okay. So maybe we can.
Do you need two days to get over the hangover for New Year's?
Well, I'm just thinking, there's not gonna be any, unless there's an application sitting in the office right now.
There isn't.
We're not gonna have anything for the second. So, so we could ask them to come to the 16th? Or I could ask them to come to, do you think it would probably be something?
I have nothing scheduled. I mean.
But we could, but we could get something for the 16th.
That will have to be once a month, that's horrible.
Why don't we just cancel this third or the second, whatever it is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Second.
Right, yeah.
Second.
Okay. Okay. So I can reach out to him and ask if he could come the 16th? He may be busy. So the next option would be in February. Okay. So first of all, I don't think we need to vote. I can just cancel the second, I believe.
I think the chair has that authority.
Executive action.
The meeting on January 2nd is canceled. Hereby. Put it that in the minutes. Take care. The only other thing I'm not sure about is when we wrote the proposal, we had very clear, like, objectives deliverable, objectives deliverable. And this is a little lighter than that on deliverables. It's draft. Don't want to be in a situation where we can't get something from somebody. Not that they would do that, but, and they may have done that on purpose because we will have to be the ones to finalize things.
I think that might be kind of where, where, like, where their head's at.
Yeah. Maybe I can just attach the proposal and say something about, you know, it needs, it's like an addendum to the con, addendum to the contract. And our expectation is that you will be helping us meet these.
And we may want to say, or we, we, I think between now and the next time we meet, I think the board should consider that at either the first or third meetings of every month, or we want to start scheduling this, that it's actually an agenda item, this, this process, so that we're always seeing something every thirty days. Because as good as Steve is, everybody gets busy doing stuff. And, and we, we, we want to get a lot of conflict.
Yeah.
That we, that we want to make this sixty thousand dollars feel like a hundred and twenty thousand at the end.
Can we change, so there's, I didn't realize there's a back. Not to exceed sixty thousand, bill the town monthly for all tasks completed. Could we change that to something a little less wishy?
Is, is the contract already signed?
Oh, no, the contract isn't signed. This is there, this is a draft to, to us.
Yeah. I signed the state one, the grant.
Which auth, which authorizes this to get.
Yeah.
That monthly review though, Glenn, will allow you to redirect if necessary.
Or the board to. I just don't want it to get, I, I just want them to be, to know right from the get-go, they're gonna be talking with us every four weeks. So that we don't get, because once we go three months, one of these disappears as being.
Yeah, the dice cast.
An ordinance that we see an a, actual draft for.
Yeah. Well, can we just say that?
I think, you know, it, they've done these before too, and I think they understand, like, we're on the hook with the state to do what's in the proposal.
Right.
Sure, but maybe if we put something about how they won't get paid unless we have a deliverable in hand. That might motivate them.
Do they bill per month?
They do, they do monthly.
Per month for tasks completed, which, which doesn't mean anything.
I mean, normally consulting is just hourly. And then, the other thing is that the R P C allowed us to pay them after we got our money from the state. And I don't, that's not typical.
I don't know what that means.
It means normally you would, consultant would send you a bill, you'd pay them, and then you'd send your receipt to the state, and the state would give you the money back, reimburse you. R P C allowed us to put their invoice into the state, you know, take their, so they billed us.
You're talking about R P C or this company?
R P C, the last, the last consultant. So they billed us, we submitted that to the state, got the money from the state, and then paid R P C. I just remember that being an issue.
Well, we don't have to do it that way.
Yeah, that's, like, we have budget. And we know we'll get the money for it, so. Okay. So you'd like to make the billing part a little more specific?
Yeah, I mean, the way I'm seeing this list is that the first four bullets are maybe four ordinances.
That's how I, that's how I look at this.
And so I would like an ordinance in hand every three months. Or less.
Honestly, or, or less.
Yeah, I can ask him, because I, I feel like we need a schedule, which I don't remember if we had in the proposal. I think we had a rough. if we had in the proposal. I think we had a rough, it was broken down by task in the proposal. So maybe the solution is just to align the contract with the proposal a little better. I'll edit it. Um, so I'll make a motion, um, to authorize me to sign a contract with resilience planning to fulfill the HOP 2.0 grants work with some changes clarifying, aligning the tasks and deliverables and billing better with the proposal. With edits, or, you know, with edits.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good, any?
This is gonna, we can, we can really benefit from this, because they're kind of a little mini dream team.
Yeah, I feel like this is really where the rubber hits the road for all this stuff we've been planning and talking about.
And I will say from my time in, um, um, with New Hampshire Housing, other communities that work with resilience raved about them. Not, not just like in terms of their knowledge and stuff, but that they're collaborative. They don't come in leading with ideas. They really let the community, um, like they really take a ground up approach, so.
Cool.
And companion. I learned something the other, the other day, because I never, I had never seen that in a contract, that, that phrase.
And companion?
The above statement of terms and conditions acceptable to meet as to form, content, and.
And when speaking about contracts, it means that you understand the relationship between the parties involved in the contract. And I never knew that. I wanted, I thought he had used the wrong word. I was gonna suggest.
Auto complete.
He'd find out why he used the wrong word, but educating myself, he used the right word.
Well, and I, I think by, by reading the survey, the town survey that goes down, he'll get the feel. I think that's what Doug's talking about, the kind of the lay of the land in the specific town that they're working.
Yeah, yeah, I, we, um, we need to talk about that.
I've sent him some stuff when we, when we wrote the proposal, but.
Do you have the electronic version of the survey results?
Yes.
You do?
The summary and all the comments, I believe, yeah. You do not?
I do not, and I, I asked Jen for them and it, it's been radio silence.
I think I have them. I don't know why.
Sorry, I didn't know that you did. I thought every, I thought.
So if, if you would just send those to me, that would be great. That would be great.
I, what I do not have is a Word version of the audit that I can edit.
I saw that, and you, you, you asked for that two weeks ago?
Radio silence. Well, most recently I asked for it.
What format do you have it in?
PDF.
Is it a clean copy of a PDF?
Well, it's got my comments all over it, but.
You should be able to have OCR just.
Yeah. Now.
Sure.
All right. I'll do, I mean, it's got a lot of images on it. Anyways, I'll do that. Okay, um, speaking of master plan chapters. Glenn.
I did changes to one, letting the changes to the other.
All right.
The vision chapter, I made the changes that we had discussed in every place. The, the reason I was looking for the master plan, um, survey results was for the back page. I expanded the description of what this, this is anyway, but I really wanted to use actual examples and I couldn't.
Hmm.
So this, from my perspective, gives more context about what these red and green dots say. I wanted to be able to refer to actual, um, when somebody did a red dot, why they were putting it there. And I couldn't really, all I could do was make a best guess.
Probably a good summary though, right? I mean.
So, I mean, I, I changed the, the table and the two places that we talked about changing the table, um, at the last meeting. And if folks have other comments, want more time to look at it, whatever, I, I don't, I don't care, but I'm, I'm happier that at least the things that I had problems with, I've, I've let them change.
Okay. And remind us how we voted. Did we vote to wait?
Look back in the minutes.
Oh, the minutes. Oh, my goodness. I think we voted to accept with changes one of them.
I think this one, Glenn did.
Okay, we, we did not vote on, yeah, we voted to continue, uh, the vision chapter until Glenn had a chance to overhaul.
No, the housing one.
What's that?
The housing one.
I have PDFs of the summary report and the full results for the housing survey.
Transportation one with amendment, second motion. So it was a transportation one that we already, um, motioned to adopt with the edits.
That one's done.
That was one lady.
You should probably still look at it, just in case.
We can, but we don't need to vote it.
We can let them again, I mean, right?
No, 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 just.
Form of, of, of motion.
Just saying. We should, just, everyone should read through.
Uh, could, could I raise a question? Um, because, um, I, I don't want to, um, slow down the process because I, I, I think that the, the document really looks great. My question is, and I think I, I may have brought this up last meeting, but I don't recall, um, do we want to add a little addendum, um, to, uh, to talk a little bit about, um, the progress with the South Road 125, um, intersection, intersection, only because it's referenced in the transportation chapter, but I don't think the, like, some of the updates are reflected.
Oh, you mean the turning lane and stuff?
Yeah.
Good.
I'm, um, it, it's, it's not like, it's not like a sticking point for me. I'm more throwing it out to see if you all think it's important to have maybe an addendum in there about it or if it's not necessary.
I think it's a good idea.
Mm-hmm.
We could add some positivity to something, right? Really, not negative.
Where would, where would you want me to put that?
So there was a section about, um, uh, dangerous intersections, if I can find the, the page.
Page seven.
Yeah, the dangerous intersections. I think, um, that that, there may be an opportunity for just like a short addendum there, you know, about like, um, the progress that has already happened and then the project on the horizon.
The project on the horizon is in a footnote.
Oh, it is?
It is, yes.
Oh, I, oh, I, I missed that. Thank, perfect, thank you. That's fantastic.
I don't know why it printed like this. The real one doesn't look like that.
If you have any comments, um.
Yeah, that's because that's when I got it done.
But thank you so much for your work on this. I, I mean, the, um, the, the improvements to the document really are noticeable, so thank, thank you.
I, I also spent a little time on, because the pictures, it's eight o'clock. Because the graphics are so big, it, I moved some text to make, yeah.
So does the footnote on page seven address your question?
Yeah, it, it, it definitely helps. The only thing I would maybe, um, ask the board is, is do we, do we want to mention the turning lane?
Okay, is that, can you add a, a little bit? Okay. Okay, but I think, um, I mean, we could vote again, but I think we're good on this one. Okay. Um, so the vision chapter, it says in the notes that we.
Would look at it on December 19th, which is today.
We continued to today. Okay, so you cleaned up the tables.
Yep.
And added context to the figure on the, at the end?
The only thing I, um, if you go to page five, you'll see that I have this, this hanging statement at the end. The full survey results were available at, and it's just a series of X's because the only link that we have links to the RPC site and you have to have a password.
Yeah.
To access it. But if you have it, we can put it on our website.
I think it's already there.
You know that it's, it connects you to the RPC with the.
Oh, well, then, yeah, I have.
So there's a, so I don't think we want to put.
Because it's under town project.
Hmm.
But when you click it, it brings you to that password required access point.
Okay.
Um.
Do we want to squash some of the comments on there though?
Well, that, so there is a summary. There's like a seven-page summary that.
Then why don't I say the.
A summary of the.
Survey summary is available on the town website.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm, yeah, I'm not in favor of having the whole document. If somebody really wants to look at it, they can always come to and request it, but the comments were not, like, the functionality was not supposed to be there because we were concerned that was what was going to happen, that people would just pile on to what the person before them said, and then we shut it off partway through. So I don't think it's representative. So let's just stick with the summary. So.
You can use the force that you're saying if someone wants to come through.
Yeah, we have the summary and it has some, it has representative comments in it.
Right, right.
But the, but there's like a hundred and fifty-page document with the comments about everything that I don't think it should be.
And, and the comments actually, I remember looking at it, and I don't know how I did. I must have looked at the paper version. Um, but there, because they're comments from people, there are direct opposition comments. I mean, somebody says that they love something, somebody else says they hate that very same thing.
Yeah, but some of them are also, you know, off-topic and all caps.
Varying degrees of vulgarity.
Varying degrees of anger.
Yeah.
Um, but I think all that information and the pros and the cons and what people are unhappy about is all in the summary. Covers it. Okay, so are you sending him that stuff as we speak?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I'm going to cross that off my list. So you're one of you.
Should I send, uh, should I send you actually?
Yeah.
Nothing.
Make sure he's got it. And then, so you'll put the summary or you'll put the summary on the website in the housing section and give Glenn the link. Glenn will put the link in the vision document. Anything else in the vision chapter?
So we have to have two public hearings?
No.
Just, that's it?
No.
All you need is one public hearing, and if you make changes, all you have to say is what the changes are. You don't even have to re-notice like you do for zone. Beautiful. But yeah, she would need a motion.
You just got an email from.
Would somebody like to motion to approve the vision chapter?
Uh, so moved.
And second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Two down. Um.
Housing one.
Housing one.
Woo!
I will work on and I'll, I'll see if I can't get a, a draft version of it out around the January 2nd timeframe, because I'll, I'll be coming, well, I'll be coming, I'll be here, I think, um, on the. So, yeah, at some point I'll, that's what I'll do when I'm making up some of those hours, get that draft out so that people can see it at least, at least a week before we open here.
Well, we're not meeting on the second.
Correct. When I, when I talked about the second, I meant I'm trying to get my hours.
Um.
I do, I, once I turned, he was doing minutes, and he turned around and I was just standing there. I visually starved him.
Uh, so these documents are already on the website?
Oh, good.
No, like, I didn't do it. They were already there.
But not the, not these ones.
No, no, I mean the, the housing surveys.
Housing survey.
Already, I didn't do it.
How could you get it when I just looked on Wednesday and could not get it?
Did you?
I looked on the landing board.
Okay. Sign ordinance change. What is this about?
What's the deal with these signs?
No, it's all positive. I think it's all positive. Why don't you start, Mark?
Context.
So I had a very interesting ZBA meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And this was, um, a contentious issue. Jeez, my words carefully.
On a specific proposal or?
Mm-hmm, this contractor supply.
Okay.
Wanted to put a garden center sign.
Saw that, yeah.
Next to it.
Mm-hmm.
Um. No, it's, the caged-in area, they built to like a gazebo type of apparatus.
Like what a lot of big stores have.
Yeah.
Their garden center.
Right, I mean.
I still call it storefront because it's a solid gable and.
Yeah, that, that's debatable. You know what I mean? Like, I'd have to seek some guidance on that.
Sure was.
What, contentious?
Um.
Really?
That, very, very, I had, um.
Really?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm choosing my words very carefully.
So, yeah, so was there a problem with our ordinance?
Well, I mean, our sign ordinance may or may not need some work, and that's why I'm bringing it to the attention of this board. You are the authority to make and suggest zoning changes to the town of Brentwood via the town voting process. Uh, so I'm just bringing it to your attention.
Yeah, the mechanism is good. It just needs a few revisions.
Yeah, like.
And Bruce came up a couple, with a couple of good ideas.
Well, we, you know, we, I think the, uh, there was a lot of contention at the meeting, but I think the contention wasn't so much about the subject at hand, but it was a reorganization of the way the board.
The interpretation.
Of its, uh, the ordinance, the fact that some new members are actually reading the book that the town provided the ZBA with.
Yeah, I, I would prefer that we just didn't go into that at all and just concentrated on.
Yeah, I need to understand what the problem is.
Well, really interpretation, I guess.
Interpretation, exactly.
So we need more clarity in our.
Clarity on the, uh, definition of the ordinance.
So purpose was.
No, I should, I should have highlighted, um.
Specific words that are problematic.
Specific ordinances. Um, I can tell you exactly what they are.
I, I think that there's some ZBA members would be very interested in, in working on some changes with the planning board.
And that would be lovely, but you can't do it for.
It would be for.
Oh, no, it's not, not for this year. Oh, no, 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 no.
Right, for.
Wall signs?
Yeah, for zero zero dot zero zero three dot zero zero three dot zero zero one.
Wall signs, okay.
Okay, uh, if you read that one.
Okay. That's not clear enough?
No, because.
Other side of the page, four zero zero dot zero zero three dot zero zero four dot zero zero four.
I, I think perhaps the, the size of the sign is the other issue. I mean, now the town has grown, we're having larger businesses come in and there are maybe some different requirements for some bigger buildings. So I, I think it's not something that we can revamp tonight, but I'd like to convene a little working group on a Wednesday when Glenn was here, get any members who are interested in coming.
Allowed one.
And we get ZBA members to come in and.
And I'll bring you a couple of examples of sign ordinances in other communities because we worked on this with Bob Rossman.
Rossman, yes.
About a decade or.
Yeah, good, strong decade.
Twelve years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so we should look at it again.
Oh, and I, I think the basic tenets of it, I mean, the types of signs and all that, it's perfect. It's just maybe some of this, the, uh, to talk about some of the newer directional signs, many different businesses have today. That was something that you brought up, Glenn. That was your idea. It's a great idea. And, uh, I think it'd just be cohesive. We get the, some, uh, group together. So I would work on getting the group together at one of your work times. And just some proposals, and then we bring that.
So.
Perhaps increasing.
Were people concerned about consistency of the rules being applied to all businesses or that?
Well, not, not in this particular case, but that's where some of the, some of the friction came from past. Unrelated, unrelated.
If you read some of the instructional, uh.
I saw the proposal.
You do not, you do not have to precedent with zoning. There is no precedent, because that's the only thing about the ZBA is that each property is unique. So to take something that you've done before and apply it to another property that doesn't apply. So precedent, it really isn't a, a thing with a ZBA board.
Well, it, it shouldn't, but it actually does. Um, I mean, it, it's supposed to be case-specific.
Correct.
Isn't supposed to be applicable, but let me tell you, attorneys are successful in showing how it needs to be applicable. So ZBA decisions have to. So, ZBA decisions have to be.
Some uniformity.
Yeah, there has to be.
It can't be arbitrary.
It's a, it's a fair comment. I mean, I read that in that book. That's what it told me.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that, it's not, you're not supposed to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I am supportive of there being more discussion about this. I'm wondering if we could also add lighting to the discussion. And my question is, I know we talked a little bit about dark skies, and some things are grandfathered in, but places have site plans, and site plans have lighting on them, and there's a lot more lighting, seems like, every day in this town that is pointing into drivers' eyes and other things. And I'm wondering, you know, so you have applicants that come in and very specifically ask for something, get approval for something, or they go and they ask for an exception, and other people are just kinda like doing what they want.
Just wing it. Well, I know that.
Maybe that's a code enforcement thing.
But, but I think lighting on a whole is like, like, maybe we can talk about what's the problem, and is there something that should, you know, select board to do or whatever, to address it on the whole. So, we're not picking on anybody, but like, I would like to see us come out with a.
This work group is really a site plan review work group.
We could expand it to that.
And, and so, it's all the, any regulations in site plan review that have to do with commercial development could be something that this committee considers looking at.
Yeah, I mean, I, you probably don't wanna go too far, but thing, things that tend to be maybe added over the years that kinda creep up. More, you know, people putting things in display that aren't supposed to be there, storage or whatever, maybe.
As far as approved site plans go, it's, it'd be code enforcement to, to do that. Now, if somebody puts up a light that is, does not have a site plan, then I think that's something the, the select board would get involved in, was public safety glare or, you know, causing safety issues on the road.
Only if somebody lets us know. I let our former police chief know, and he said he would press.
On the webpage, there's a, you can fill out concerns.
Alright, I'll do that.
Okay.
I mean, I have pictures, but no.
We'll, we'll start with the signs. If we can make a little progress on the signs and bring some information to the board.
Signs and lights, okay.
Just, um, uh, just a quick question, because I, I really like the working group idea. Would this be like an official ad hoc committee that, you know, would be noticed, that, uh, you know, folks could, uh, uh, members of the pu- public could come and, and offer their input?
This is a good idea.
If you don't, if you don't have.
Official and ad hoc are the opposite.
Yeah.
Fair, fair enough. I worded that poorly, but I think you know what I mean.
Yes.
Yeah, if, I, I see this as an ad hoc work session without a quorum. I'm guessing there's only gonna be a couple people.
I think we probably would be, we don't wanna meet when Glenn was here for his, his input.
Makes sense.
The problem is always not having too many people, it's having too few people, so.
Yeah.
We could send a, a note around, or, or Mark can send a note around.
Yeah.
Glenn has the time.
I just think i- i- you know, i- if it's not like being noticed, having some mechanism for public input, I think could really.
Oh, yeah, because any changes.
They'll come back with.
Well, down the road, but also crap, but, but, but eat, but even in the beginning, as, as ideas are being, you know, thrown around and things like that, like, not just, you know, towards the end of the process, but have people involved throughout the process.
Yeah. Well, no, I mean, I, I get the, I get what you're saying. I think the, I think there's some sort of desk work that needs to happen first.
That's fair.
To identify what the concern is and what
Sure.
the parameters of what we're talking about, and then those people come back to the board in a public meeting.
Got it.
And we can discuss ideas.
Okay.
And then, if we're gonna propose any changes, then we would have to notice a public hearing. But, yeah, I'm always open for public discussion.
I'm comfortable with that, yeah, okay.
Okay. That's that. We have minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm gonna abstain, Mark. I wasn't here for that, so.
Same here.
Thank you.
Uh, Doug.
But, I, you know, I had the question of abstaining, but I thought maybe we were told, maybe we weren't, that if you.
Read the minute.
If you read.
You, you can, but it's still a personal decision.
I didn't know. I mean, I didn't wanna do the wrong thing.
If we have.
You can't believe that was asked.
If we have enough votes, too, I usually push people if they want us to. Any other business?
Yeah, I'd just like to, to mention something in it, uh, me involved, and non-public at a future time, but I know that Glenn did had some communication with town council on an issue, and I just, bottom line is, I just don't wanna let this thing drag on too far.
I, I did need to call her yesterday, so.
Okay.
When I said this, I said earlier, there were two things I wanted to talk with people about tomorrow. That was one of them.
Okay, so, that's an issue I'm, I'm very vested and interested in, but we could wait till the nineteenth, maybe have an update from you on the nineteenth as to how, how we proceed at that point.
Yeah.
Is this the item that we asked you to reach out about, or is this a new item?
No, this is the time.
Okay.
Today is the nineteenth.
I'm sorry, Doug.
The sixteen.
Okay. Alright, so you'll just make sure I get that TEC thing signed by the end of the year.
Yes, yes.
Um, and thank you for the budget. So, um, we can talk about it next meeting, but we'll have some money to give back, I think, and I'm okay with that. I'll work on the resilience contract. And you guys are gonna work on the TEC one.
On the topic of the budget, all departments should expect over the next month or so to get an email from the board with suggested cuts to next year's budget for you. So, just be ready.
Yeah.
What you think?
Be surprised.
Okay, well, let's, there's no reason to have that discussion now.
No, I just, I just. Uh, let everyone know that that's coming, so it's not a surprise.
I commend you on that, lady. For the work you put in on it.
Uh, we finished all, we finished approving all of the budgets last week, and the number was not good.
Acceptable. Um, is there gonna be a percentage goal or something like that?
Uh, Jen and I were hoping to get the budget into single digits. Right now, it's at twelve-plus percent over last year.
That doesn't bode well for affordability, so I'm glad that some people are taking a step to work.
I mean, there's only so much we can do unless we wanna start cutting services. That is hopefully not gonna happen.
Okay. Well, we did get a grant, so, um, we could look at our master plan chapter line item.
Oh, yeah, I already took that one away.
See, let's not talk about that tonight.
Yeah, well, because you said you were gonna have a capital reserve, so you don't need to have money in the budget.
Yeah, I also said I was gonna keep it until, like, Goth, or in case I don't.
I did not, I did not want these, this to happen.
That's why you shouldn't talk about it. Okay. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, anyone?
So moved.
Seconds. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Cynical, cynical.
Alright, hold on a second, folks. Let's get the.
So moved. Who was the bad guy?
This is what we budgeted, this is what we actually spent. No, it's like a couple hundred bucks here and there, but when you add them all up, it's eleven.